Educating, Informing, Serving. Fact TV, Keeping Government Honest. You're watching a Fact TV presentation of the Rockingham School Board Meeting.
It's 5:30, so I'm gonna call the Rockingham School Board to make some order. Right now, we have Jim McCondon.
Bill Morris.
Bill Morris. And we have Chris Kibbe on the screen. Caitlin said she was gonna come by. She may be joining us shortly, but we do have a forum, so I'm going to get started. Bill, you led us last time. I'm gonna ask Jim.
Alright.
Us this time.
That's why I wanted to do it by. Unfortunately, it stays.
Do we have any adjustments to the agenda?
I do not have any.
Okay, Jim, you're set. Chris, any from you?
No, also.
So, okay.
Caitlin is joining us.
Okay, so Caitlin just joined us also, so all members are present tonight. We're gonna review and approve board minutes of August 7, 18, and 25. It was a regular meeting, the 18, I said 25, 18 and 28 were best for the meetings.
We approved the board minutes of August 7, 18, and 28.
Thank you, Jim. Are there any corrections? Without any corrections, we'll approve them as they are. Okay, reports, finance, you're up.
Yeah.
That was quite.
This may be changed a little bit because this is the end of it.
Thank you.
Okay, so I just wanna go through this a little bit slower for tonight because this is new. This is your new function summary. And I'm looking at page one, and the numbers are on the right bottom. Everybody see that one?
Yes.
Okay, now, I just wanna mention to you.
Jim, before you go on, do they have the same one or is theirs?
It should be online. Chris, do you have one online?
No, where should I be looking for it?
Nicole just sent it out.
Nicole sent it out this afternoon.
Okay. I will search for it.
Caitlin?
I got it. Which one are you looking at right now?
Function summary, operational function summary.
Caitlin, are you set?
She's.
They just disappeared.
Yeah. Shouldn't you do that?
Ariel, everything is moving really slowly today for some reason, so I am in the process of trying to open the document. I will let you know if I can.
Yeah, Google isn't letting me. I'll look at it on my phone.
I think it's the heat.
Oh, I got you. Sorry for interrupting.
I just wanna go over the headings. You'll notice on that top part where it says GL budget. General Ledger Budget. And that is your code, the function code that you passed in your budget and it was approved by the voters. Now, next to it on the right is Range to Date. Now, I don't do anything with that. All of that is what you expended in the past month, October. Don't care. Year to date is always going to be from the beginning, July 1st, through whatever date we're printing. So that's an important one, and you'll notice on that top line, we've spent $35,812 to date. They subtract that from your GL balance and it gives you $1,131,655,92. Then there's an encumbrance piece, and why I think that's important is last year, yeah, you had an encumbrance, but this year, I think it's fairly accurate. And so if you take that encumbrance out of your balance, it gives you a budget balance, remaining balance, not expended, of $236,354, of which it's 20.25% of your budget. Now, again, I think it'll get, it'll get difficult originally to get used to the detail because you're looking at the function now with all of the details that go with it. And Henry Carey have their schools, or will have. Henry, do you have it as yet?
The actual, the Tyler Acta?
To be able to go in, Tyler.
Not well, no.
You do.
What we went over with you, right?
Yeah, yeah. So each of the schools will be able to download this to their school and know what it is. So, regular, regular general education is on page three. And a quarter of the way down, we'll see function, general education, 1101. Now, again, this is the total, that 3.8 is the total budget for general education. And if you go way over, on the right, you'll see $991,977, which is your remaining budget unspent, is, you know, 26%. That's what you've got available right now. And again, last year, I mean, you didn't have like encumbrances for the worker comp and that piece. We'll just skip down another quarter, we're athletic, 1401. Now, here, I've got a question is salaries athletic director. We've got zero. And is Connor doing any of that for you, Henry?
Yeah, so that was our question, whether or not it was out of that whole curricular budget that we had there because he's, Jess is doing some work for us, but Connor technically is doing.
Yeah, we're scared to put that out. Yeah, so anyways, at least we know where to look, where there's gonna be some movement of monies in the contract. So I just point that out.
Jim, can I just go back just for clarification? So, back like on the 1101, the budget balance of $991,000 and change there, that's after encumbrances spent, so, right? So that's what's spent and what's encumbered, that's the remaining part.
That's correct.
Just wanna make sure we clarify that.
And what we're trying to do is, we've not, this is a work in progress. And so as you have monies that are, that should be encumbered. And the reason I say this, we'll go to the end here and see what you got. But where you've got $900,000 of bonds that have to get paid November and May, that really has to get encumbered because I don't wanna mislead anybody saying, oh gee, we got $2 billion, $2.5, $2.6 million available. No, you don't. So we've not encumbered that piece as yet. And it has to be because we wanna try to give you, if you get in a point where you say, need a math teacher for that seventh grade, then we get it. Andy wants to be able to tell you with what, you know, accuracy you have available for those funds. So, I just wanna, just quickly take you through if I can. So I'm on page four, and the top of page four. Now, I'm looking at the first two lines, salaries, teachers, guidance. Saying, for that, you didn't expend any? And you didn't encumber any? So, do we have a position that's missing? Is that filled? And so, maybe those contracts have come in late? Don't know. New hires? No? So anyways, we've got a whole look at where are those people that didn't fill in?
You don't have a guidance person, Saxons River. Right?
Oh, yes, yes, you're right, Saxons River. Yes, thank you, Chris. Okay.
You've got, on that one, you've got, the first line is guidance, and the second line is guidance.
Yes.
And I thought, I thought we were gonna identify it by middle school and central.
It is, Jim, it is.
Which is?
Yes. Yes, so. Let me just turn over.
The abbreviation for services, I think. It's just too long for the line.
Yep, yep.
Right, we can't see the school name.
Yeah, because we get SERV on some of them.
Yeah, well, and we'll have to figure out because as far as I'm concerned, could be the insurance as INS too. So we'll have to, we'll have to look at that because I do want you to know what school it is. So I'm looking at page six. And Kerry, this is the center of school psychological services in the middle of the page. So, right now, you've got $85,000 that's available. Now, I don't know that there's any reason to encumber this, whether there's some students that is a, wow, you know, we wanna have that available for the budget, but I don't have any kids tagged with that currently.
We do right now.
Yep.
Is that our 80/20?
Yes.
Yeah. So I pay 80% of the position and Kerry pays 20%.
And then with that is also our HCRS student as well, so.
So what has, will have happened, see, that should've, that should've gone into this account. But, but this is a contracted service, so I mean, it may be that you'll have to move the money. You know, if you've got a salary position. Okay, move right along. So, I'm on page 11. And I just wanna mention towards the three quarters of the way down where it's insurance, insurance, property liability. Now, that's $42,000 of money. Looks like it's open and unspent, but that, that has been expended and will all show as expended in the next run of this. You know, and again.
Did you say 42,000?
42,000.
It's, it's 329 and 9, so.
Oh, okay, the three, the three lines.
Yep, yep. So anyways, whatever it is, 40. And above that is snow. You know, we've got $11,000, none of it's encumbered. But typically, what I would do is if we have a vendor, I would do a purchase order and at least prep it for being expended, just so you know it's not available. On lap, page 12.
Now, these, these insurance ones.
Yeah.
Again, maybe it's cut off, but is that for one school?
That's for all the schools. That's probably that C.
Yeah, what I figured out was, if you look at the account code, 1001.101, that's middle school, 104 is central, and 105 is Saxons River.
Correct.
So everywhere you look throughout the whole budget code system, that second set of three numbers, 101 is middle school, 104 is central, 105 is Saxons River.
I think they're pretty well in order with the, because if people come up with their trash removal house, the middle school then.
Oh, no, no, yeah, I already, I figured that out earlier, so we can go back and like someone liked the guidance piece that we were just talking about.
Yeah, yes. So, the last page, page 12.
I think what would be important there, Henry and Kerry, sorry, is we gotta get Rick on getting whatever, like on snow removal or whatever. He's probably got a contract he does every year. We just gotta get it, sorry.
And you know, it's not to say, we don't know how much snow we're gonna get.
Right, right.
But I would encumber the entire amounts.
Right, right.
He's just gotta do the paperwork.
Yes.
Yeah. So anyways, here, the heating oil. Now, you got $109,000 of heating. I don't know how much we're gonna consume, but I do know this. You're gonna end up saving some monies out of this bucket because last year, I think we were at $4 and something. I think we're down to $350,000 now this year. So we know there'll be some residual. And what that does is it gives us the ability, when you say, oh jeez, I'm short here, we'll move it out of, from here. And as I say, the million dollars or $900,000 for the bond, we'll encumber that as well.
Jim?
Yes.
A question on the heating oil. Are we locked in from the earlier higher price or how do we have a chance? Does that fluctuate for us or are we locked in at the price when the contract is signed that day?
So, I just wanted to give you the long story here.
Okay.
So by, I mean, this is a bid. We asked for bids on this. Now, the difficulty is, you know, you're given a day, two days maybe, to react to this. So, am I conforming against bid law? No, I'm not, because I'm gonna do what's right for the district, sorry. And you have to move quickly. This is a commodity that has to be bought when you, as soon as you get pricing back. So, we ended up, I mean, we got various prices, but the best, and I can't think, it's the guys with big tankers. No, no, 8,000, 8,000 gallon tankers are, what was the name?
Irving?
No, no. He just does the big tank deliveries, but anyways, we locked in, and again, I was stunned because it's a great price. It's a price that other districts didn't get. And again, we were, we were a little bit over $4 last year.
What was it, $350,000?
$350,000 is what we locked in.
No, that's a good price.
Yeah, yep. So, the bottom line, grand total here. So your budget is $10,246. And with the expenditures and encumbrances you have available, at least by what this says, of $2,707,000. All right? 26% of your budget remains. And as I said to you, once we start to fine tune this and tweak this up, you'll have a lot less. And I think the only, the only thing, it gives you some guide rails to, against where to run. And we can shift money as you need to fill the gaps. But I just wanna make sure, this should be your guide as to what you're spending.
Can I go back?
Yes.
On page two.
Yeah.
It's about half, right in the middle, tuition, pre-K, early ed rock, $150,000. And none of that's encumbered, but just because that fits into that $900,000 that was in there. That's money we will be spending. We just have no idea, so.
But we're gonna encumber the entire amount.
Yeah, I just didn't want people to think like, there's $150,000, it's spent somewhere else, so.
No, thank you for pointing that out. I mean, you're right on. Yep. So.
Jim, the question I had is on the first page, the fourth line down. It shows our budget for Saxons River teachers was $381,000. We should go having spent 16 and encumbered 410,000. That doesn't make sense to me. So that, I would just, I would just highlight that.
I don't. The only thing, Jim, that I would look at also, and you're right, I mean, I see what you're saying. But your budget amount, $381,000. You know, and again, were there new teachers that were brought in? Maybe.
They're missing the counter, but I don't know if that would come on.
But you're right, Jim, we gotta go back and look at that.
Yeah, and then two down, it shows the pairs at the middle school.
Yes.
Is is.
Looks like there was one more.
Well, it went from 25, a budget of 25.6 to an encumbrance of $80,000, so something is, something is amiss there. And it's not like, it's not like we approved the budget and then Henry decided to.
No, absolutely not.
So it's just. But there's been, I mean, this is the first run
Yes.
that we're seeing, and you know, my feeling on encumbrances is that, you know, take for example the snow. A snow is one that you can, you can be, you have a light winter, it'd be under budget, heavy winter, it'd be over budget, those types of things. So to me, encumbering the full amount does not make sense. That doesn't help me as a board member. And that's the kind of thing I'd like to see almost as, as it's expended. But on something like debt service or the preschool tuition where, you know, if it's, if 150,000 represents 12 kids, for dead, if you use a number, and we confirm that we have 12 kids, then fine, let's encumber the full amount. If we're, if we have 11, let's not encumber the full amount. If we have 13, let's encumber the right number type of thing, so. But anyway, we'll work through that and.
And Jim, I do, I understand what you're saying. You're in a fortunate situation in which you're comfortable cash-wise. I mean, cash-wise, you're in the driver's seat. Sometimes schools will run into situations in which hash is doing the driving. And again, we're not there, but, but there are times when I had to hold payables because I didn't have it in the checking account. So, the only, and you're right, I mean, you really don't, you're not there. But I just wanna, wanna try to prepare for the worst case. That's all I was trying to do. So, and this is new. This is, I realize this is uncomfortable for you and you're saying, geez, a lot of numbers there, but honestly, this breaks down in the same format that you had. Now, I know what you're saying. You're crying for more. You like what you've got, but you want to see more. All right. Now, the object code. The object code.
Jim, I will say, if you're passing it out, it is, it is nice to have, have these again.
Yes.
Oh, yes.
That's a great honor. Thank you.
And I think, I think the desire for more and more and more is, is is because it makes more sense now, you know, thank you very much.
Yep. So, so this.
Jim, I had a question.
Yes, Chris.
Go ahead, Chris.
Just a quick, so Jim, were these reports much easier to generate than, I know you were jumping through hoops to generate those other ones? How'd they go?
Yes. So these, it's just a button. And if you wanna call Nicole and say, hey, I want a fresh update, she can pump out a fresh update for you at any minute of any day. That's nice. Either way, if you wanna buy an object, she's got that too. So this is.
Gosh, we already pre-timed.
This, you're really in the driver's seat with, and you know, it's not only good information, it's accurate information. So, buy, buy object, again, I'm not gonna take you through this, but same thing with, with each object going down through to the bottom line. And it all tracks into your budget against the encumbrance piece and gives you the bottom line of where you are. I think as a tool for information and data analysis, this is perfect. It really tells you where you are. So, the last piece that I have for you, of course, is revenue. And so this is, this is your Rockingham Operational Budget Revenue Sheet. And this just tells you what we're expecting for tuition. And I'm looking under the GL budget for $1,280,000. That's the projection for this year. Bank interest is $4,000, and miscellaneous is $1,000. Your ed spending grant, and that's the amount that the state of Vermont gives you to support education. The ed spending tax is the property tax. Of course, we call this the Vermont Property Tax, is $4,386,000. Now, the piece that's not in here, and I'm trying to figure out a way to get this in to make it clear, is the $700,000 that we used from last year's unreserved fund balance. And I would love to because ultimately, you know, you wanna have this come up to the $10,246,000 balance out, but we'll develop something as we go.
Because the $700,000 is a, is a stone of, I think, two different years, two or three different years of going to the taxpayers at the town meeting and saying, we wanna, here's the surplus, we wanna reserve X amount for.
For 24.
Yeah.
24.
So I think there are a couple of years, possibly a third year, I'm not sure. I don't have that sheet in front of me.
Yeah, yeah.
But that's the missing number. Is the, is the funds that were, prior year surpluses that were allocated to the 24 budget.
Yes, yes.
And that's $700,000.
That's $700,000.
Jim Vanzina, so that $700,000 isn't reflected in the ed spending grant and the ed spending tax?
No, that is not. That, that's money.
So you're, you're saying there's another $700,000 in revenue? Is that what you were saying?
Yes, it's, it's from reserves that you had available to you, and that was, was used to.
Right.
So that 700 doesn't show. That 700 doesn't show here, Chris. Because when that.
Okay, well, I just wanted to make sure. Yeah. That it's, I just wanted to make sure that it's real money and not already accounted for with the ed spending grant and the ed spending tax.
No, it is not in there.
We didn't ask for it.
Right, when I put the seven hundred in, Chris, it balances you out. To that ten million two forty six.
Okay, okay. I got you.
English, yeah, yeah.
Um is the bank interest at four thousand dollars, is that based on the one million two hundred and ninety thousand created?
No.
Where does the four thousand come from?
That's an estimate.
Estimate.
Of what we expect. To receive in interest over the year. And again, that's because um as you just got through pushing back some of the SU. Surplus monies, um it all goes into to that bank account as well as. Trying to think of how much you had as, as reserve and I can't.
Well, we had a, we had a capital reserve of a million eight.
Okay.
So we had a real estate reserve of a hundred thousand, we had. Uh annual going out until two thousand twenty seven, twenty eight, of maybe another. Oh, at least a couple of million before the W N A S U.
Yes.
Eight hundred thousand, so I think four thousand is mo- is a modest number given current uh interest rates.
Yeah.
Well, four thousand dollars on a million twenty nine is only half a percentage point.
Yeah.
So I'm curious what rate we're being given on this interest.
I, I think it's less than four, but there's gonna be two pieces. One is the reserves accounts are gonna go into a certain bucket at a higher rate. We end up having what's remaining for us to get ready for payroll and expenditures. Is going to be in what they call a sweeps account, that'll be at a higher interest rate too, not at four, something underneath four. So.
No, I can appreciate we're dealing with different pots of money for funding. And that there's a different fluidity for access to the funding for each of these pots.
Yes.
Um just, uh if, if in your mind and in Jim's mind, we're being given a fair return interest ra- wise, then I'll stay with that.
Well, I would just say, though, you're, you're right, I think four thousand is a low number. Given current interest.
Yes.
We don't know what's gonna happen with the interest rate, but.
And and.
I would say that that is a low number.
Yeah, I, and I don't know that we're bringing home four percent on this right now. Um. Uh again, we'll see how that shapes out, and I'll, I'll keep you abreast as we go forward. Uh and this four thousand really is a guess. I mean, I, I know, I don't have a clue as to, in the end, how much interest you wanna bring in.
Well, I'm sure that could be a topic for a future of worth it.
Yeah.
I think the bank knows exactly what they're, they're trading from their, their account with us, on various accounts, but uh. Yeah, I'd be curious what it actually reflects.
Yeah, yeah, well, we'll keep you, as, as we pull the interest out, we'll keep you informed.
What bank is it anyway?
Mascol.
Mascol, okay, thank you.
Any other questions that I can answer?
The only other question was, you know, we, we did receive a copy of the Wyndham Gruppe Supervisor Union Management Letter.
Yeah.
Which I assume applied to.
Yes.
In the SU as well as the member.
Right.
Uh so, uh although it wasn't addressed to Rockingham School Board, you know, Westminster School Board, it's uh. Uh but obviously, the uh. Uh I, for one, would, would be interested to see the response to that.
And I haven't done it as yet, Jim, and I will say this, uh this. Getting the conversion. Was such a heavy lift. Uh more than I expected, because as I said, I think I said this to you before. Back in January, I should have asked for two more people to get this cranking. And my, my focus was off. Because this thing was an enormous lift.
Oh, looks good.
And and see what I think we got straight. This is not just one entity, this is five entities, five different tax codes. And it all has to be, there's still an enormous amount of data. You'll never have to do it again, I hope. But, but remember, should you have to, man, this is, this is intensive. But, okay.
Uh any other questions, sir Jim? Want to. Long that year.
Yeah, yeah.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you.
Alright.
Um next up is principal reports, um and we're gonna start with you, her boots.
Um so yeah, so for the start of the school year, um everything started off really well, we uh have two hundred and thirty eight students currently enrolled at the middle school. Um those dropped, we lost about seven students in the first week transferring out to uh other schools. Um thirty seven fifth graders, fifty eight sixth graders, seventy six seventh graders, which is a quite a big class, and then sixty seven eighth graders. Um like I said, for a total of two hundred and thirty eight enrolled um as of today. I just wanted to take a minute to thank everybody who came out to our back to school barbecue, uh August twenty eighth. It was great to see, um we had a really good turnout, many community members that came out. Um parents, students, got a chance to engage with their teachers. Uh I think I cooked like around a hundred and fifty hamburgers and about the same number of hot dogs, uh so it was a pretty good turnout, like I said, and. Next year, we hope to expand it to, you know, even the broader community, and be very, it was a great, um, great event to kick off the school year. Nice kind of back to school focus, and I think that really led to the way we started off the year this year. I said, this is my seventeenth year in education between teaching uh second years admin and. By far, like, the first day of school was one of the best I think I've had in seventeen years, um. And I think that the vibe around the building uh was the same, I talked to a lot of teachers who came up to me and. And said very similar things, but it just, the kids were excited and happy to be here, uh the staff was excited and happy to be here. Um and us three administrators were, you know, right there as well, I mean, it was great, it was a great experience, a great feeling. Um it felt really good, you know, for all three days last week, and then today, being the fourth full day, you know, fourth day of school, um was no different, so. Um our focus this year is on climate and culture, uh something we really wanna change here in middle school and obviously help to the broader community as well. Um then instituted our, we have new core values uh that we're putting into practice this year, so we use the acronym terriers. Um T stands for teamwork, E stands for engagement, R stands for respect. The second R stands for responsibility, the I stands for integrity, the E stands for encouragement. The R stands for resilience, and the S stands for spirit, so. All over the school, um you can see these uh core value posters, every classroom has one. And they're all spelled out for them, um using the acronym terriers, and each one is defined as well underneath, it tells you what teamwork is, you know, as a, as a terrier, what engagement is. Um so on and so forth, so we're actually using um what we call prod cards, so prod cards are, you can, in the office, uh students can go up. And they can fill one out for another student, um staff can fill one out for a student, or students can fill one out for staff. So anytime they see any staff member or student um practicing one of these core values. Uh they can write it up and we announce it in front of the whole school uh every Friday, so we do this weekly. Um we started off last week, and it was pretty cool to see um students giving out these awards to staff. Um and obviously staff giving out these to students, um anytime they show any one of these core values, so. We wanna ride that um for the year, I think that that's. Been a good start to where we wanna go with this, this culture, um and I think that it'll help curb the climate, um you know, as, as the year progresses. Uh the roofers delivered all the material last week for the middle school, and they'll be here at seven AM tomorrow, I also got an email, it's told not to park out back. Uh tomorrow, that they'll be here uh ready to, to obviously get going, which was, which was kinda nice, I figured, uh you know, the two days that we had with rain. Um and that roof, I can't wait to, for them to get started, so we're really looking forward to that here. Um and I wanted to keep it short and sweet, so, uh at this point, if anybody has any questions, glad to, glad to field those.
Anybody? I think just the start that you had and the camaraderie that was going on was, was impressive and just that. That interaction that I hadn't seen in, in the past, so.
Feels good.
It's a good thing, you know, we can now have that and join in together. Thank you, Henry. Alan, Carrie?
Sure, so good, good evening, guys. Um so Central's enrollment is also down a little bit, so we have kindergarten is twenty six students. First grade twenty nine, second grade twenty eight, third grade is sixteen. Fourth grade is thirty two, we're a total of a hundred thirty one students. And so we've had some several students that moved out to a different town, out of state, there was a little bit of a housing shortage, unfortunately, some students had to move away because of the housing shortage. Um and then the change in any kind of, any of that just status, with the, the. Esther funds had, you know, stopped coming in for housing supplements, so that did affect a couple of students as well. Uh so we started off in a great way too, we had our Park Place Carnival, so we're really super excited that they were able to partner with us. On that, August twenty seventh, so we'd like to thank Park's Place, we had. The Bell's Falls Fire Department, the Police Department, the Rotary, the Department of Labor, the Rockingham Library. Greater Falls Connection, Turning Point, Coda and Coda, and so many people that came, we had Mr. House in the Dunk Tank, we had. Congdon in the Dunk Tank, a few of us were in there as well, and it was really fabulous, great event to have everybody come in and really kick off the year too, so. Our opening days, these last few days have gone very well. Uh a huge shout out to all the staff that pulled it together, it's as the ambassador has said before, it's always that quick rush, it looks like it's never gonna come together, and it does. You know, Ken and Soli did a fabulous job getting it ready, but we also then had a um a nice staff kickoff, so we partnered with Food Connect, so we had a little food challenge. Little dessert throw down on the first day on the twenty eighth. Um so every team of six was basically given uh berries. And the ingredients from there, we were just, you had to compete to make something that was uh either student friendly, healthy, um. Decorative, something along those lines for the competition there, so. I don't know that there was a clear cut winner, but we all got to try a bunch of different recipes, it was a fun way to get to know everybody and our new staff as well, so. We thank Food Connect for that for the Harvest of the Month, so we had fairy treats. Uh we are keeping an eye out this week on the temperatures and making adjustments for recess and the other, uh you know, activities, PE, things like that. We understand it is warm, so just to make sure everybody knows, please make sure you have a refillable water bottle. Uh but to really keep hydrated is important, and you know, just we're keeping it low key, we had the lights off a little bit today too, and try and keep it a little cooler. Um it is warm, we recognize that, if anybody has spare room of fans that they wanna donate, by all means, send them our way, so. We are trying to limit the amount of, you know, major action movements and things like that too, so. Uh we are continuing with responsive classroom training as well, kindergarten is now back in full days, so we had three half days last week, and so we had the full days this week. And then we welcomed our four-year-old preschoolers today, so they are there now full day, which is a big adjustment for them. And then they will be there five days a week, which will be another adjustment too, so it was nice to see their sweet faces and they were smiling and happy and ready to go. Most of the tears were parents, so. Uh and just again, uh getting ready for our milk dispenser part, so I know it was mentioned before, we had our bulk milk rollout. Um so we partnered with Miller Farm and Harley Sterling has done a great job. With working on this grant and that has allowed us to have bulk milk, so basically. Each student now has a, you know, access to a reusable cup. And they go in, just like everything else, it gets washed and things, but they're able to go take it up to the dispenser. And just like you might have seen in like colleges, sometimes the things, they were able to lift up the piece. Um and to get their milk out, it's very nice organic milk, so it's basically thirty six hours removed to you. And so when we had our rollout on Wednesday, um the day before, the cows were out, and so Tuesday's milk was served Wednesday morning in our cafeteria, so it was amazing. And uh Ornofa, the Northeast family, uh excuse me, Northeast Organic Farm Association was able to come in and send somebody with us. So Kayla helped roll it out, we got some little cow squeeze stress balls, we got some temporary tattoos and some stickers, and it was an amazing event, so we got a lot of comments about. This is awesome milk, one student even commented about the fact that he was, we're glad there wasn't a lot of cardboard now in the containers anymore, so. And kudos to kindergarten first grade teachers, cause they're basically filling out pitchers. So we weren't quite ready for the five and six-year-olds to go to the dispenser just yet, so we had a little bit of more practice with it, so. But second grade on up have gone over, fills it up, very little spillage and with a lot less milk waste too, so. It's been a great week of everything getting ready too, so. Everybody there. Any questions or comments?
Any questions?
Carrie, did you say that you needed desk fans?
We certainly would welcome anybody who has fans.
I have three, when would, when should I bring them over, like eight o'clock tomorrow?
If you, either a few minutes before or a few minutes after, eight o'clock is right when the kids are coming in, so.
So when would be a better?
Yeah, quarter of or mid-quarter after.
Quarter of, I'll do.
Yeah, okay, perfect, we would welcome that. There's a few rooms that are a little bit cooler, I mean, warmer than others, so, thank you.
Um I just have a couple of questions for each of you, and then as we have a summary of evaluations on there. Does either of you have anyone, any of your feelings around co-op plans at, at this point? Okay, and when do you start, are you starting your walkthroughs?
Yeah.
Do you start it though?
Yeah.
And how many are you doing a week, and, and if you can address those kinds of things? And when, how many teachers are on um. Your evaluation for this year?
Yes, so I don't have the specific numbers in front of me, I apologize for that.
Yes.
Uh but we, basically, so right now, in the first few weeks, our focus is responsive classroom feedback. And so staff have been given a rubric, and I know you have the camp sample ones of looking, you know, specific areas that we're looking for right now, it's just sort of generic. Are they able to use, you know, a lot of getting to know you activities are responsive classroom tools. And so they're getting feedback right now about that in the first, it's only week two, so. It's just, how are they doing as a whole cohort, you know, we don't want them to rush right into academics, believe it or not, so we want them to take the time to get to know their students, so we're not having. Issues academically, um years, I mean, months down the road, because they took so much time on, you know, the academics now, we want the social relationships. And then basically, every staff will have multiple ob- observations. Um and then obviously, yes, it's tiered, depending on new stu- new teachers will have many more, so that everybody will have one at least formal observation before November fifteenth. Um and then it continues on through before April fifteenth, so.
Yeah, same plan here, so we're gonna start our walkthroughs next week, um I wanted to wait till the first full week of school, we're doing a lot of responsive classroom stuff too. Getting to know our students, creating classroom expectations, like student buy-in, creating that community in the classroom, a lot of circles and stuff to start and end classes. Um so not a lot of nitty-gritty, you know, down-to-work stuff yet, I figure next week. Um is our plan, and my assistant principal plans to help me out with that, to kind of split it up. Um how we're gonna do walkthroughs, I'll handle the Dorya, their formal evaluations, and again, I'll get, everybody will get at least one. Uh if they're in their first three years, they'll have at least two. Um hopefully, I can get more than that with everybody, uh would be the ultimate goal, uh but I found a lot. Last year, and the few that I was able to do to, well, a few, but the walkthroughs uh were. My favorite, um not because of the time constraint of the uh formal observations, but. It's pretty cool when you can just walk into a classroom, they don't know you're coming type thing, but that you see the engagement, uh the engagement piece is huge for me, like. Used to being on the other side of things, like as a teacher and thinking of things, like obviously curriculum's huge, but it's how do you engage your students? Um I felt like I found more with those little walkthroughs than I did with the formal, you know, observations, but I mean, I do understand the purpose behind the formal, so. Yeah, so next week we'll do uh walkthroughs, or we'll start walkthroughs and uh formal logs by November fifteenth.
And, and the staff is divided into three, three levels. That will be getting your, your uh formal evaluations this year, and another for the next year. But all new teachers get them this year.
Yeah, oh absolutely, yes, and everybody.
Yeah, I kinda spelled it out a little bit, we have a, we have a supervision and evaluation plan, so. Um teachers are typically on a three-year rotation, and, and that rotation. Uh we try and coincide as much as we can with their renewal or their certification. So that, that way, um it, it helps, we have to get that information to the association, it helps the, the, the teacher stay on track. Which is beneficial to us, but then also, it just kinda helps us align everything, so. Uh essentially, just as um Karen and. Henry were talking about, um we're looking for a minimum of like three to five, three to eight walkthroughs. On a teacher, in, in a year, but what we really ask is that principals spend this first six weeks really focusing on. Um that culture and climate routines and that establishment, that piece. Um and then we're gonna utilize that as an administrative staff at the end of the month when we come together to calibrate our own thinking. So when Carrie's looking at. Um what she sees as a routine, is that similar to what Laura's seen as a routine? And if not, how do we calibrate that, so that as we move forward, we're, our teachers have the same expectations from administration. We think that's important. Um and so like a, a new teacher would be, uh would get two formal observations every year and a written evaluation at the end of the year, so. Um it would move through that kind of a process, um there are no. Um, it would move through that kind of a process, um, there are no teachers within Rockingham who are on a cooperative. Uh, of improvement plan, so.
I, I thought probably, from what I had heard, but I'm just, I kind of wanted that standard, because it's kind of nice to have it out there. And, and that our teachers are meeting expectations and, and doing what we want them to do, so that, so that we know that. And I think the walkthroughs will make your, your staff so much more comfortable. With, with just the whole process, because then they're used to you coming into their classrooms all the time and. And that makes the formal one easier. Also, because it's, the children aren't thrown.
And, and part of the plan is, let's say, Henry, you know, it, it has a teacher who, you know, um. Maybe they're not on that year three, you know, they're, they're a veteran teacher who've been with us, where they would have a, a formal observation, because it's year three of that cycle. Um, but he goes in and he's done a few walkthroughs and, and again, a walkthrough is not an evaluation, it's an observation. But he sees something that's just. He thinks he needs a little bit more in depth. He can say to that teacher, I, hey, let's meet, I wanna do a formal observation, come in and do that formal observation, so. The plan, the supervision evaluation plan, it's just a guideline. Principals have to like manage their staff, right, so if there's someone who is um. Who they think needs a little bit more attention, we want them to give that attention to them, and that's, I think where the walkthroughs allow for that. Much more frequency, as you were just saying, for someone to be in the classroom and to get that idea, because it's random, you're not going in at eight o'clock. To see, you know, um, Miss Chamber, Chamberlain at eight o'clock every day on a Monday, right, like it's. You, you vary that throughout the day and throughout the week, so.
And this is a question for you, it also would allow for a teacher that wanted to have a formal observation. Um, for her, them to request that as well, because that can need supportive. If they're having particular problems in a particular area or something and they recognize that.
And we want our teachers to take risks, we, you know, um, we know that. We learn, we as humans learn best through our mistakes, and, and the stakes aren't bad, they're just opportunities for us to recalibrate and, and. You know, as, as new technology is coming online and uh new ways of, of thinking. And, and teaching, we want teachers to have that opportunity to try and not feel like. You know, I don't wanna try this because I, I might get dinged for it, so we'd rather have a teacher just see your savings, so they'll say, hey, I'm gonna try this out, can you come in and look? That, 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 that's the, the relationship we want to have with our staff and, and the learning that our staff continues to do.
Um, did you have something from Laura? I know, I think she sent something so that we could all look at that. She's starting her, she's starting a graduate class and it is, it's, tonight's the first night of the class. Which is pretty rough to have to miss a first class to be here, so I think she's, she sent us something.
It might be under Google Docs where you can go.
Yeah, we're gonna have to re- revance that the last time. That, that was, that, that was fine from the last meeting, we, we had said that wasn't working for you all, so uh, we've got to figure out a new plan for that.
I don't get his name, you know.
Okay, so, so if, if the board members could kind of look at that, they'll have a general thing from her, unless you wanna add anything heavy.
No, I haven't, I apologize, I.
Um, she runs her program very similar to, to Carrie's and so, um, having heard some of hers. Some of the background and what, and what Laura would be doing. She had, you both had open house on the same day, um, I may have shared those. It was nice to see, like, the interactions, see all of the stuff going on in your schools already. And the parents just totally engaged and, and interested in that. So I thank you all for, for your reports. Uh, superintendent update. Uh, do you have anything for us, Andy, that?
I, I didn't have anything prepared specifically, I didn't know if there was something.
Just anything that we need to be aware of, I know, um.
I mean, we, there's some things down lower, I mean, I can talk about them now, or I can talk about them lower, um, that are, that are probably more pressing, I mean, our. You know, we've, um, obviously getting school open has been probably our biggest push, um, and I'm very grateful. You know, for what the principals and the staff have done, getting um, school back open for students. Um, you know, uh, you know, payroll was a, was another big one, this was our first big payroll piece, so, uh. You know, Jim, you know, kudos to Jim and his staff for getting that out, um, you know, as far, as far as, um. Uh, I know it's later on, but PCB testing, um, Central and Rockingham are scheduled for late fall. And so late fall could be December even, um, you know, um. They don't give us an exact date, um, part of that is that. Uh, they come in and they do, they would do a walkthrough and then they create a plan that they submit to the state. For the state to approve for doing the thirty percent air sampling, so, um, so that's what we're waiting on right now, or, or. Or the, um, testers are waiting on is that information to come back. Um, and so then, um, once that has come back and from the state giving that approval, then they will set up a, a date and time to come in and do the testing. Um, throughout the both buildings, um, and then once we have those results, obviously we'll, you know, um. Respond as, as appropriate, um, you know, um. Levels are, are. The, the levels will, for like this building, will be based on fifth grade, because we have fifth graders in here, because the, the way the state breaks up. The different uh levels, um, it's, you know, um. It's a preschool and it's K through six. And then it's seven through twelve, and so, because Central has a preschool, it'll have one set of numbers, Saxons. Might have a second set of numbers, because they don't have the preschool, and then the middle school has fifth graders, so they'll have to go with that, those. Uh, that lower threshold number, um, so that's, uh. Uh, you know, where we talk about the high school is, is a one hundred, is the school action level, it will be lower for all of our other buildings, uh, the action level, so. So we'll have to, uh, you know, make appropriate measures, um, assuming that, that outcome, I don't wanna make any false predictions in any way, because we have no idea. You know, uh, the Westminster School was built right around the same time as the Central School and. It came back with no detections of PCBs, so, um, you know, um. Um, and, but that also has put on hold some of our, um, our bigger projects, like wanting to like do a roof. Uh, kind of thing at Central and stuff like that, because, um, we, we wanna make sure that. Um, we don't get ourselves into a pickle, uh, with that, um, but, uh, we're moving forward on. The renovation of, um, Saxons River, right now we're waiting on bids to come back in just for that project. Uh, that's the main entrance or the, the alternate entrance project. Um, and then we're just waiting on some bids, uh, to come back in on the kitchen project at Central. Um, once we have some bids, we'll bring those back to, uh, this board for approval, because we'll need that approved, uh. Finalized approved, so we can push up to the state for approval.
Is there issue with the construction and the PCB testing, or, you know, it's more external construction than internal, it's more. Relocation, but what, does that impact anything?
Um, Steve Horton hasn't felt that it's, uh, it's anything to, to impact, um. Um, part of it is, I think the roof was scheduled right around the same time. That has something to do with coinciding with the, the PCB testing, so, um. But, um, he didn't seem to, uh, have any concerns around, uh, the kitchen piece. Um, and then, um. So that, I mean, um, you know, we're, we're continuing, um, security entrances, just, um. The, the bigger piece with cameras and, uh, network upgrades, um, so we've had contractors in here pulling wire. Um, getting cameras up and ready, um, many, um. I think this building is a little further along, just because it already had some pieces in, in, in part. Um, Central had some difficulty with their, um, network closet. It was literally a closet, um, that looked like a rat's nest, so that had to get cleaned out. Um, but, uh, already at, um, both of these two schools, um. As you approach, uh, there's a, um, a new device, you know, like a. Doorbell, if you will, you know, you can ring it, um, there's a camera on it, but there's also a, a, a fob, a keyless fob that, um. We will be rolling out pretty soon to staff and stack and then, um, wave their, their, their badge and then it just lets them in. So it's a, it's a real nice feature, um, that we can do, and then, uh, the cameras are coming online, um. Ricky was just showing me, I think on Friday, we was able to pull up, we're able to pull up from Central Office all the different, uh, schools and see what's going on. So it's, uh, it is helpful in that sense. Um, and there was a, an issue that had happened at Central on the first day of school, we were able to go back in time and look at it. Actually see what happened, it was, it was a real nice, um, piece to be able to. Not be in a, a situation where we've been in the past, where can someone please go in and pull the film and archive the film and do those things where we. When I say we, like at Central Office, I mean, I had access to it, bang, 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 and pulled it right up and could see. Um, what that happened in from different angles, so that, that's helpful.
Okay, so. You, you kind of covered some of these.
Yeah, I know, I know.
Look, I'm, I'm gonna go down through and then come back with, with quick ones at that, at the time when we go down through them. Do that. Um, so, uh, appointments and resignations are, um. In executive session, so we'll have that at the end, uh, non-resident tuition policy. Uh, we looked at that last time, um, we sent it to the lawyer and, um. The A, the A and B under the criteria for admission, we, um. Took out the, the one that he felt was questionable, um, which left us open to, um. Uh, interpretation as to whether we were saying that we weren't paying for anything, especially. When Caitlin only if we had it, that wasn't what was meant, so we combined, um. Back into one statement, Caitlin looked at it and I looked at it. And, um, combined it, so that is what we got posted, it was posted on August twenty fifth. Um, do any of the board members have questions or in their, their, they want to ask about?
I'll, I'll move to approve.
Alright, so Chris has moved to approve. Um, anybody have any questions, or we, we covered it last time, so. Okay, I think we're ready to vote, um, Chris, how do you vote?
Yes.
Uh, Caitlin?
Yes.
Bill?
Yes.
And I vote yes, um. This will be the, so that, you know, so superintendent can also, if he gets a request, I know I had a. Kind of that was asking us about possibly coming to our school the other day, and I wrote them back and said we were addressing that. The, um, admission statement tonight and asked if they had contacted. Mr. Haas or their board chair, so, um, I haven't heard from them since that, so it's in their. Uh, lap to be able to do either one of those, and this makes it pretty clear for him to proceed, thank you. Okay, um, we have PCB issues on here, um, you've covered some of that, um. Uh, let me clarify, because I heard you, late fall for Saxons River and for Central? Central and the middle school, okay, I had it written down, thank you. Um, is there any projection for, um, Saxons River?
I have to go dig through my, um, notes, um, because I originally. Given that information out, I just don't have it in front of me, I can dig for it, um. Let's see if I can find it all, if there are other questions, I'm gonna find them.
Alright, um, that's okay, and that just gives us clear, and. Bill, do you have a question?
I had two questions, maybe Carrie can answer the first one. Does the roof at Central currently leak when we have, right?
It's not necessarily leaking, there's some areas that we're really looking at in the preschool spot, there's potential for, um. It's not, you know, consistent with the leaking, like we had buckets at, say, another school. Um, and so, but there does seem to be some stainage that we can't completely confirm. Uh, we just had, you know, the torrential downpour on the first day of school and things too, and there doesn't seem to be there, it isn't a cue to be replaced. But that's what we're saying, the construction's putting that off while we wait till, um, the PCB, I should say, the PCB testing may.
Right, I understand that sequence, so right now we're not having, uh, wastebaskets collected. Okay, and the other question, Andy, um, speaking of remediation of PCBs. I know it's town property, but sixty-six Atkinson. Uh, supposedly there was going to be soil testing for contaminants, could you check? Um, with the town and find out if indeed that survey took place last month and when we will get the findings?
I know what the town, I heard a lot of the first people, and, and it. And maybe, maybe in the last month or something has happened, but up before that, nothing had happened yet.
Right, Carrie and I actually, uh, through, so I believe we're in. And, uh, touch with Michael, I forget his name, but he was the person, the engineer, environmental engineer that. Told me that finally that they were going to have a survey performed in August, the middle of the month, and if Andy could just check and see. Uh, is that survey was performed on the property, testing the soil, and when we'll get the results?
So, Andy, I don't know if it's been shared out, I know we're in the process of sharing it, so we have been invited to a public session, a forum. For Atkinson and Street.
That doesn't have to do, that has nothing to do with. So, I, I'll, I'll be very honest with you, I know nothing about what's going on in that property, nothing has been communicated to me at all, um. I only heard through the grapevine that we weren't, that the soil was contaminated, so.
That hasn't been determined.
No, 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 what I'm saying is, nothing, I had only heard that, that's what I heard, so. Nothing has been communicated, it is not our property, so.
No, but it would be put to our use as far as Central School is concerned, that's.
Well, it's not Central School, it'd be, it'd be. It'd be an SU program that was gonna go there, but I'm just saying, I'll look into it. But I don't know anything about what's going on with that property, because nothing's been communicated.
Yeah, it's been, it's been a full year that it's been in process as far as, as possibly getting, you know, the testing done, so.
There's a, a group that I think, Andy, you're aware of, that wanted to lease the property to, to a program, et cetera. And the, uh, the testing of the soil is a condition of moving forward, so obviously they haven't moved forward, so. Uh, up until June, or kind of, it hasn't been tested, but.
Right. Um, Michael's supposed to get back to us once it was tested and then he.
Well, maybe. Okay.
And so, um, he told me that, you know, they were just here then, so.
I have a question for you.
Yes.
Uh, the, on the, on the, uh, with regards to the PCBs. I know in reading the paper that the, uh, that the high school is expending funds. I see the tents, uh, I, I read about the, uh, air filters, vocal air filter. And my question is, are you, is the, uh, is the SU on behalf of the, uh, high school board? Are they submitting these expenses, these bills to the state for reimbursement? And if, and if not, why?
So, we have not yet, because the state has been. Within their grant management system, which is the platform that's used for reimbursement. That hasn't been opened up yet, um, I spoke with, um, the person responsible for that, uh, on Friday. And they were working on it, uh, and it's supposed to be open sometime this week. Um, and as soon as it is open, uh, we will be, um, pushing for those reimbursements. Um and as soon as it is open, uh we will be um pushing for those reimbursements and um. You know, and uh again, there's a small pool of money, and I say small, because it's thirteen million, but you know, it's. You know, it's small when you think of the whole state, because that's all that's available right down to the whole state. Um but um, you know, we're looking at everything we can to. Get reimbursed, and I and I say that in the sense that worst case scenario with one of these, uh one of your buildings were to come back. Um what we have to do is is for things to be reimbursable, we have to get approval. Through the Department of Environmental Conservation, and when they say, yes, this is approved. That goes to the AOE, and then the AOE says, okay, that's reimbursable, so the tents. Uh we were approved that that was a mitigating um. Activity, and so therefore it was reimbursable, so everything we come up with is an idea, we have to push up.
Sure.
Get them to approve it, and then um then the AOE. Earmarks that as that's going to be monies that they're gonna reimburse for us, and then as soon as they open it up, that piece up. We will start going to those reimbursements, so the same thing will happen um. If there was some reason to do that here for your buildings as well, so.
But so we're at the point of, we have a letter back. From um the first first ones approving us to. So we're in the process now, it's gone, has it gone to the AOE to approve to, or that has to wait for the man the grant management?
It so it it has all been a very seamless process that we push up to uh DEC. Uh DEC, if they have questions, they email us right back, um and our consultant. Um from VHB or VDH, I apologize, I get that wrong every time, um they're involved in that conversation. Excuse me, the minute um DEC says it's approved. Um the AOE is in involved in that email, and so they're they're made aware of it, so the the official letters come a little later, but. Everyone's involved in emails as it goes, and we try not to expend any funds. Even though the high school board has told has given us the ability to expend funds, we are trying to make sure everything we expend would be reimbursable. Um and so, again, uh something like the filtration systems, that's something that the state went ahead and approved. We we are not paying out for those at all, so at this time, so we are only paying for. Uh things like the tent, uh the tents, uh we're looking at bringing in some modular um units. Uh some things like that, um transportation, because that's a big piece as well, um. Some of the difficulty is if we were looking to, and we just found this out recently, so any place that we're venue, we're looking at maybe possibly sending. Our um students, so um. Let's let's use the middle school here for an example, using the auditorium. So we might say, oh, let's use the middle school for the auditorium for school plays, because we can't access the high school, um. We technically cannot send our students here until this building is tested and been found to be under the. School action levels. And so any venue that we look to contract with to send our students has to be. Either built after nineteen eighty or be proven to not have PCBs. Because the idea is that if there's PCBs in your building, you can't be in your building, why would you send them somewhere else that potentially has PCBs and and. So um that kind of threw a monkey wrench in our high school plans. Um to just kind of pivot with, we were always thinking like. Auditorium here would be a great, you know, it's a beautiful auditorium, you know, access it and whatnot. Um but until this place is tested, and that's nothing against Henry or his building or his staff. We just can't do that, and so the same thing would happen if something came back here and we had to make some adjustments. We would have to make those same similar adjustments of of looking at venues.
It's just uh it's just a, you know, it's the kind of thing where whatever was in the minds of of these legislators to pass this complexity and the. Uh the scope of this uh of this thing is uh was was not, I'm certainly was not envisioned and. And obviously the, you know, uh as I mentioned at a public hearing about the unfunded mandate, uh I guess one of the. One of our senators commented that they did not, they do not intend to have this as an unfunded mandate. But it's certainly a mandate that's gonna have costs. And uh we're hoping, you know, we we think with with our renovations to our buildings in in Rockingham, we should be okay, but you never know.
I I've been I've been invited to sit on numerous panels at this point. At various levels within the state and through different associations to um. You know, just to talk about what's going on with us, but also to learn from other folks, uh but really to push for, you know, um as you say. Funding the mandates, because that's really where it comes.
Where it comes, yeah. I uh I I would like to make a motion.
Um, okay.
But the PCBs.
I think then until we know the um. If we have any situations or anything else, maybe we should put um.
No, no, it has nothing to do with the discovery or non-discovery of PCBs. This has to do with the fact that the that we are party to a lawsuit. That 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 Andy signed this up for. And we we also would have found out that the state of Vermont, who we're looking to for reimbursement. Has also filed lawsuit against the uh Monsanto, and so we've got these two law lawsuits out there. Um, we, the one that we're a party to, we're obviously not a party to the state one. Presumably, uh we're not a named participant, signed on, party to it.
We would be a party because the the um attorney general's office is the one that's doing it, and that is for the whole state of Vermont.
Yes, but that's that's different than 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 electing the Rockingham School Board is a member to of of the lawsuit that uh. That the uh. Uh Pietro's firm is is, so there's two, there's two lawsuits, okay?
Okay, the high school has already done a um and are in the process of doing it, which is going to cost um. The taxpayers some money for doing that and looking into those, and so at this point, I really feel that. We're part of that because Rockingham is part of that issue at the at the. High school as well, where where we have larger contingency of students there, so we are part of that. So I'd kind of like to wait as far as doing any other additional things of of. Looking into those until we find out what is happening with the high school one, because. I don't feel that we should do any additional that is costly to our taxpayers at this point. So I'd kind of like to put it off till we see where where it's going with the high school.
Well, if the if the if the highs. Your high school board member, are you saying that we can rely, the Rockingham School Board can rely on the high schools? Uh outside council's uh opinion?
I think we should find out where where what they are finding out and where they are going before we do what we can always do, a motion. Um and, you know, at the next meeting or the one after that, if we find that we also need additional information. Besides what they are finding out, but I think at this point, there um they are doing counsel, they have passed. For an outside counsel, and they are looking into things that uh uh. Addressed all PCB issues, is what their motion was, and so. Um Rockingham is part of that contingency because we have students there and we. Uh we have that, we have more students there, so we're going to be more on the hook for taking care of that situation. And it's causing to, that's very glad, I think, Rockingham here should hold on, we don't even know if we have PCBs at this point.
Well, I think the 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 issue is, uh for me, for example, is um. I'm I'm I would like uh independent counsel to assure me that that on the suit that we have been signed up for. That we have absolutely no exposure to liability. Either expenses or the threat of reprisal from the parties being sued. Uh that I I would I want to know, I want, and I'm I'm representing the taxpayers here, I'm concerned about that. I know from a standpoint, we just had a discussion with Andy. We are looking to the state for reimbursement for any costs that we might incur. And the state is filed suit against Monsanto. It would seem to me that the the state has an excellent. Cause of action against Monsanto, if in fact there is a a liability issue here. Okay, so I I feel very strongly about that, what I'm concerned about is this other suit, which is being brought by private. Law firms, who are looking to receive a a large payout if they if they're successful. Uh and I want to be sure, not just by hearing Pietro, because he's he's got a vested interest. I want to be sure that our taxpayers are not exposed to any cost or liability as a result of this second suit. And I think I think if if the if that is the if that if that is part of the high school's. Scope of inquiry in terms of who they're hiring. Then I would be happy to uh rely on that opinion. But I need to know that as a as a school board member, because I represent the taxpayers of the town of Rockingham. And I don't want to have have exposed them uh to uh potential liability. So I mean, this is serious stuff, uh if uh this is not, this is not what we discussed at the SU meeting, which was whether. Pietro should have advised Andy to come to our board, this is entirely separate. This is now an issue of these two lawsuits. Uh presumably seeking the same type of uh. Uh redress, we don't know, but as a lawyer, an attorney that could look at both of these cases could tell us. That they could very well say, okay. You really should stick with this other lawsuit as well as the state. Or blah 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 blah, and and that's fine, I mean, I but we need to hear that, we need to hear that, and if if you're assuring us. That the high school's. Inquiry to outside council covers the concerns I just expressed, then I'd be willing to wait.
I I believe it does, they just hired, they just hired someone this week. And because it's just this week, I think we need to find out from them exactly if if it is covering that exactly. Without our going to additional expense for the same thing, is what I is what I'm saying, so. What I'd like to do is wait for the simple reason that I'd like to make sure that we're not incurring the same expense at our. At our board level as what they are incurring at theirs, because theirs was general. Um I I do think a limited motion to do that first and see exactly what you're asking. And they did not want to do that limited, they they did a general one that covered um all PCB issues. And so therefore, um and they hired the lawyer this week, so um that was. Because the chair was given the right to hire someone, and so he went out and he has someone, and so now the next step is to find out. Exactly whether it is covering those issues, looking at both lawsuits.
All right, now who's gonna report back to? Is it Andy report back to us?
It's it's what you would, it's what the board would like to ha- happen, I'm on the high school board as well, so I'm willing to bring back. Anything that goes on in that area, or we can ask Andy, we can ask the chair of the high school board to come and report to us. Whatever anyone would really.
Well, I you know, I don't want to spend the same dime on the same inquiry, I just want to be sure that the that the. That the charge to the attorney from the high school covers my concerns. Uh and uh and so, somebody needs to tell us that, okay? And it's either you or Andy that's gonna tell us that. Uh because if it's not, if it's not gonna address that, then uh uh then we ought to at least weigh in. To the uh high school board and uh and give them the benefit of the concerns that we have, or that I have.
Absolutely, and and it's it's a valid concern. We certainly do not want to have any anything come back on us that we're liable for anything additional. Outside of of the um suit that's being done, I did read the short form of it, I have not read the hundreds of pages. That the long form in in entirety, because that a lawyer can do and and give us advice. Um, Chris has his hand up, so let's listen to Chris, Chris?
Yeah, um well, I'm noticing that Jim started off being worried about a conflict of interest a few weeks ago, and now it's evolved. Into retribution from Monsanto, uh. And of course, you came from Chicago, Monsanto land, Jim, maybe you know that company, but uh. But um, I'm not ready to vote on this yet, it there was no, nothing warned, and you know, if. This concern can be addressed through what the high school has done, I'm fine with that, but. Uh I I am wondering why this is, don't talk back at me, Jim. I am wondering why this is sort of a moving target. Uh for a certain group of people in the community, uh but. If this is a concern, then let's get the information through the high school and make sure that we're on solid ground.
Okay, so eh my board members, please, please give me direction as to, would you like me to um find it out specifically? Um through the high school and report back to you, is that comfortable for you, or would you like it to be? A different route?
I'd be very comfortable with that, and and Jim had some good wording there that. Uh, you know, was very clear about about exactly what he was asking, so I I would suggest. Go ahead and do that, and um we would. Uh I could move to. Direct the chair to uh pursue this question in her capacity as a high school board member.
Is that comfortable with everybody?
Yeah, yes.
Okay, so I think by ju- just general consensus, I I will find out from them and and proceed with that. And we'll get the words specifically from.
I just want to make sure, this is not about conflict of interest.
Okay.
This is not at all about conflict of interest, this is about knowing where we stand.
Okay, thank you, thank all of you.
Just just want to point out that the Attorney General's suit is on behalf of the state of Vermont. And funds would not come back to individual districts, funds would go into the general fund. For the state of Vermont.
That's right.
So they're not conflicting lawsuits in that sense. That is we know. But but I guess what I'm saying is that if. One were to be, if if the Attorney General's lawsuit were to be able to to go through fruition and have some kind of outcome. Those are dollars that are gonna go back to the state, they won't, no, no individual dollars will flow down the distance.
Except in the meantime, we're gonna, we're gonna go after the state for every dollar we spend. So it's, you know, that's, that makes sense, okay, if they're if they're reimbursing us. That enhances their their case against uh Monsanto for the exposure, so. Uh but but yes, that that would be the way it would work.
All right, anything else on PCB issues? All right, uh five-year capital improvement plan, you talked about the bids, um. Andy, um can you be any more specific on that for me?
Well, I I bids under a five-year capital improvement plan, I don't, um let me. Let me try and sort those out, the bids had to do with Esther projects.
Yeah, I know it's mostly, so so we're looking at just Esther projects at this time?
Well, so I've asked each principal to um work with uh Rick Schuman and and develop a a capital improvement plan. Um and I think. Um, and I think, you know, we're right at the beginning of opening school, people, you know, coming back. So people are still working on those plans and, and working through those. Um, and part of that is also helping us to inform as we get into budget season, if we need to put monies aside for different areas, or if there are surpluses to help direct or make recommendations, uh, to the board as far as where we see dollars, because there are certain things that need to get done that won't be covered under ESSER. Um, and so we had done a, um, we'd had engineers come in and do a 10-year study, and, and the principals have those, and then they're working on, you know, some of those numbers are old numbers and some of them are, you know, so they have to kind of go in and, and replace them or, or fix them out. Um, and look at it. Um, I'm walking with each principal, um, in the next couple of weeks, walking buildings and just looking at things like through that whole different lens kind of idea, you know? When you're in a building, you kind of see everything. And, uh, we're trying to look at it, uh, just in a whole other way and just start writing down even things that maybe aren't just getting overlooked, you know, um, type of thing. So, um, we're, I don't think we're at a point, um, I've seen it. I've had a couple of plans come to me, but we're, we're not at a point where you're going to start putting it in a draft form.
Okay. I think the steps out here at the middle school were, oh, we've approved those, doing those, and you were going to find out about those and working it in with something else if possible, or Steven. Just a reminder, we've mentioned that a couple of times.
The, my understanding, uh, Andy, is that the, the roof work, they're getting ready to start here. That's, that's part of the ESSER, that's the ESSER room.
Correct.
Uh, we had talked in, uh, an earlier meeting when, when each of the principals had a five-year list. That, and clearly we, we do have a reserve fund, capital reserve fund. And, uh, and, and I for one am happy to start spending some of that to, to address issues like the central roof. Uh, but that's on hold now because of the.
But that's also ESSER.
Mm-hmm.
Was that ESSER?
Yeah. Yeah.
Um, and I know the, you know, we, we, we wanted to do the, the masonry work around the, you know, uh, and, uh, you know, so if there are projects like that, that are clearly not in the ESSER realm, but we can get them done, then I think we'd like to, we'd like to proceed with some of those, you know?
The only ones I know that, that aren't in ESSER are the steps. That's why I mentioned that one again.
I don't think they're coping around.
The coping isn't even, right.
The coping is either. Okay, so the coping.
But, uh, but yeah, I think the, and I think while we've got Steve as a kind of a coordinator, uh, that would be, uh, but I mean, obviously he's, he's focusing on getting these ESSER projects approved and moved in and stuff like that.
Yeah, like, uh, one of the things that has kind of come up, like at, at Central, um, that's been more exposed. I don't know if it was uh, just because of all the rains we've had over the summer or, um, the work that was recently done just on the road. Um, two things we've noticed that there seems to be a, a widening crack right at the stairs, um, in the sidewalk. So then it comes down to who, who's sidewalk is that?
It's the roots and tiles.
So, um, there's that piece. Um, and then also.
A ramp.
Right.
So you have to do an hour or wait till later? What, Andy has heard of that and?
Yeah, let's, let's, let's touch base afterward. So, um, but then also, um, you know, on that first day when it rained really hard, um, we noticed that potentially some of the work they just did on repaving that area might have rerouted some of the water.
Water.
Um, so, um, we'd asked, um, Rick and, and folks, um, Rick Scott, and they were out there, you know, pretty quick to take a look at it, but I haven't, they haven't, we haven't followed up with them, just.
Because of the channel guide.
So Scott picked up the Andy Horvath came on.
Sorry, I thought Rick. I meant Scott. I was singing to Rick Scott. Um, so they, they've been out, and so, um, we've got to follow up with them. But I think those are things that, again, we're not anyone's, uh,
Right.
you know, vision. And, and that just kind of popped up this summer. And so those are the kind of things that if we need to take care of those things, um, you know, we definitely want to do them. Um, and so, uh, but I agree. And so I will, uh, I'll get with Rick and we'll start getting that, um, all together. So I got your thing.
Yeah, the stairs, we had did, uh, reach out to Visbit, who was our insurance policy piece, and they did send a contractor out to look at the assessment. Um, because that was more immediate process. So right now we have caution tape and we're aware it's not very aesthetically pleasing, unfortunately. Um, and unfortunately, it was also there waiting for their contractor because it's through the insurance company. Um, and so hopefully that will be covered through the insurance policy. So.
That would be nice.
It would be lovely. So.
Okay. Okay. So in the, you're, you're in Kitchen and CES, that's in bids, that's under ESSER.
Correct.
Roof, the BMs you're starting tomorrow, and the CES is, um, at a bid level? Is that correct?
So Central Elementary is out to bid.
Okay.
Saxons River, um, the, we will go out to bid in October. We're still waiting on a finalized design.
Okay.
Um, and so, um, and then security entrances. Um, again, that is a, that bid will be going out in November.
November. Okay. That's for, for all three?
No, that's for the Saxons.
Pardon me. Yeah, no, no. So, uh, October for the Saxons River bid for the security entrance.
Okay.
The kitchen is out to bid currently. And root, and the roof at, at Central is on pause at the moment.
Pause at the moment. Okay. Okay. And then, and so the security entrance is, you said Saxons River is October. And does the security entrance also unpause at Central because of the roof being on pause?
No, there was, that, that work's still happening.
That's happened.
Uh, and that's one of those things we, when we even were doing it at the high school, even after we knew about the PCVs, we contacted Monsanto and say, hey, we've got to do, we got to pull some wire. And they're like, okay. You know, so it, it, it's, it's just a, a communicating with them of what we're trying to do. And, uh, and so they haven't had any concerns over, uh, us continuing our upgrades with security. So.
Okay. Okay. Thank you. Any other questions? Okay, so we'll do director's comments and then go into executive session for the appointment reservations. Uh, so director's comments, Chris?
Uh, yep. Sorry. Uh, just congratulations to principals and teachers and staff for a good start of the school year. Any more good days for kiddos to come, I hope.
Thank you, Chris. Uh, Caitlin?
Yeah, um, I'll echo that. Congratulations. I know it is a lot to get off the ground and get everybody moving. Um, I also, I know we talked about the strategic plan last meeting, and so there might not be any new updates, but as we look towards the start of the new school year, I'd love to know how we're progressing towards those goals that are in the plan or Andy, like the intermediary school year goals that we have for those, um, particularly related to our academic or social emotional learning goals. Um, so just would love to continue to hear more about that as we think about how we make decisions as a board and allocate resources.
Thank you, Caitlin. And we'll put, I just made a note, we'll put that on for the next meeting. Okay. Uh, Bill?
Uh, just to ditto what has been said by Chris and Caitlin. Uh, congratulations for another good start of the school year. My only real wish is that through the efforts of our teachers, our administrators, the parents and guardians, that we don't lose anybody. By that I mean, we don't lose students who no longer have intellectual curiosity. I think our biggest goal here, our, what we should be striving for, uh, even this Surmounts curriculum, is nurturing lifetime learners, lifetime leaders, people who ask questions. We're not going to have a democracy without people who ask questions, without people who question things. And, uh, search on their own for answers. And, um, that's why I think teaching is a vocation. That's like priesthood. It's, uh, you either in it or you're not. And so I appreciate administrators, many of whom are teachers, teachers, parents who lead to their children, uh, who check homework, guardians who do the same. And, um, so I'm optimistic and, uh, we'll see. I think we've got, uh, we've got a lot easier road than any other district that we struggle. So we've been blessed.
Thanks.
Are you, are you going to do next, uh, stuff for next meeting?
Yes.
Separate?
Yes.
Okay. Bill, I, I just echo everybody's comments. Uh, good luck, uh, to you and to Laura. And, uh, uh, delighted to hear that things are off to a good start. Uh, we didn't get Laura's thing, but, uh, if we figure out this Google Docs, we might, uh, we might be able to do that. But, uh, uh, anyway, uh, great, good to hear it. And if, by the way, if there's anything that we can do, I, I don't have any fans, but, uh, the, uh, uh, you know, don't be, so be sharp.
Sure.
Okay. And yes, I think that, that we work together as a board. Administration works together as administration. The teachers work together as staff. And the parents work with their kids. We just need to make sure that everyone is working for the best interest and everybody is on that page of supporting each other. Remembering to be kind, remembering to appreciate all the extra things that each person does. Um, let's do dates of next meeting, September 18th, 2023. Um, agenda items?
Uh,
Jim?
I had the, uh, the, the long-awaited test results
Test results.
uh, from the spring. Uh, the, uh, report back on the, on our P A P back on the high school, uh, uh, legal opinion, uh, solving Google Docs. Um, those are, those are the items that I have.
Okay. Um, Andy, would you be sure that you asked, uh, Dick Carden is the one who charged the testing?
So I want to ask for some clarification here. When we talk about the spring results, are we talking about our internal assessments? Are we talking about our state results?
Personally, uh, to me, internal assessments will give us much more information and much more data. It gives us the progress the student gets from the beginning of the year and to the end of the year, its, its first, second, and third, um, testing. That, however, coupled with just a quick look at how we compare nationwide, i- is important. However, it all depends on, you know, whether you're teaching to the test or whether you're, you know?
The reason I ask is just want to be very clear is the V, the BT cap, which was the old SBA, which was given in the spring, those test results are right now embargoed. And we are not allowed to release them to the public.
Not yet.
So we haven't really even had a chance to dig into them because there, there's some reason the state has put a hold on them. So, um, you know, um, but, um, so.
What about the other tests that we give there?
The MAPS test, the intervals and stuff like that. So, yeah.
Exactly. You mean the MAP test?
Yeah, that's the internal. So that's, I just wanted to be very clear that I didn't know if they're not. Well, it's why I just want to be clear that if they're not there, that's why they're not there. It's because they're embargoed. So that's why.
And then the MAP, I guess.
Yeah, I think that's what, what we need at this point.
Right.
Okay. Um, so we need a motion to go into executive session.
Um, for Stella? For the, uh, are we asking each board member for items from the agenda?
Yes, I didn't, I'm sorry, you had some too.
Well, the only thing, Andy, you've covered this, an update on the situation with 66 actions.
Okay. Also, in addition, if anyone else has anything to add, I'll add it right now. But also, if you don't send me anything additional that you would like information on, um, and by the, at the latest, the Wednesday before the meeting, so Tuesday night, Wednesday morning before the next meeting. So going back, um, by the evening of the 12th or morning of the 13th. That would be Tuesday and Wednesday, right?
Oh, yeah, September 12th.
Oh, make sure. Sorry. Calendar, yeah, by the night, evening of the 12th and morning of the 13th, the Tuesday, Wednesday before, then I can ensure that we're covered. Okay? Could I have a motion to go into executive session to look at, um, appointments for the appointment resignation? Um, which pre-mature knowledge could put either the person or the board at a disadvantage?
Yeah, motion.
Jim, Jim made that, McCollum made that motion. And how do you vote on our going into executive session to discuss a contract personnel matter, appointment resignation that would like place the person or the board at a just premature knowledge could place the board or the person at a disadvantage?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
Caitlin?
Yes.
Jim? And I would ask that we add to that, um, and invite administration involved with, with this.
Yes. As of then.
You're up.
Okay, um, we just came out of executive session at
7:43.
7:43. And, um, we have some appointments for, um, and resignations for, or anyway, motions for appointments. Uh, Chris, would you do the first one, please?
Sure. So I move to rescind the board's offer of employment to Diana James for the Ellis Wells Middle School health position.
Okay, um, let's just vote on that one. Chris, how do you vote?
Yes.
Caitlin?
Yes.
Bill?
Yes.
And Caitlin? Okay, and I vote yes. Okay, and who had the next one? Megan? Bill?
I move that the board appoint Megan Applegate for the health position at MS Step Four.
Um, just as background, Megan has been in, uh, has been a previous board member. She's also subed at the school. And she's done some health and nutrition instruction through her positions at Park's Place. And is very interested in, in the position. She's been working in that for four days as a sub. So, um, she has a um, bachelor's degree and a master's degree. Uh, so how do you vote, Chris?
Yes.
Caitlin?
Yes.
Bill?
Yes.
And Jim?
Yeah.
Okay. Next one is our art physician. Who put that?
Uh, I, uh, move to, uh, appoint Janelle Wilford uh, as the, uh, BA Step Five for the art position at the middle school.
Okay. Janelle worked with us last year and has been working on her licensure and is ready to be approved at this time. So, um, things to be known, like, and really enjoying the position and very interested. So, um, Chris, how do you vote?
Yes.
Caitlin?
Yes.
Bill?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
And I vote yes. All right. And our last one, Caitlin?
I move to appoint Jim Henderson to fill the position of eighth grade math at BA plus 30, Step 18, contingent on his release from his SU position.
He's been working with us in our schools previously, so we're well familiar with him. And he's really interested in joining a math position. So, Chris, how do you vote?
Yes.
Yes.
And Bill?
Yes.
And Jim?
Yes.
Okay. That concludes our appointments. And we already set our next meeting is September 18th at 5:30. That concludes our appointments. And we already set our next meeting is September eighteenth at five thirty. And if there's no objection, I will not see any, I will adjourn the meeting at seven forty.